All right, it is 5:30 on January 28, 2025. I'm going to call this meeting in Morton County Commission regular monthly meeting into it.
To order.
To order. First item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our roll call tonight, Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Present.
Commissioner Morell.
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Bain. We also have Auditor Ron up here at the bench with us, and we have State's Attorney Copy and Sheriff Kirk Meyer in the back. And we also have Kerry Hudson-Billar, our Treasurer. Next will be the approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the minutes from the January 9, 2025 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the meeting minutes from January 9, 2025.
Okay. Linda did take it.
I have it corrected upstairs. I've already put it down.
It does say Commissioner. Okay, because on the, it should say Board of Commissioners instead of just Board of Commission.
Okay.
So I had that one corrected already. So it is corrected.
Okay. So then we're okay?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So move to approve the minutes from the January 9, 2025 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January 9, 2025 Morton County Commission regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly bills and payroll, Commissioner Morell.
I went through all the bills this afternoon. With the exception of one packet, everything else is in good order. That one packet was pulled and waiting for justifications, so it'll get submitted for next cycle. But beyond that, make a motion that all other bills be approved as submitted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. All right, we will move right into our agenda tonight. Our first item will be Kerry Hudson-Billar, Morton County Treasurer.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I have two different items for you tonight. The first one I have is every year, every other year, by North Dakota Sentry Code, it's required to bring a list of depositories, banks that we use financially down to the Commission, just to have the Commission accept that list and approve it. I am down here for another request tonight, so I just wanted to bring the 2025 list along as well, just so that she can take a peek at it. The list of 2025 depositories that we have are Dakota Community Bank out of Hebron, First International Bank and Trust, which is our main depository right now, out of Mandan, First Western Bank and Trust of Bismarck, MultiBank Securities, which is E-Connect Direct, it's all CDs, it's not in-state, it's just a lathering CD company that the previous Treasurer had started many, many years ago, that we have quite a few CDs laddered through that. I've kept that, it's very income-earning for us, so. And then Starium Bank of Mandan. So what I would just ask, I guess, is that I recommend that you guys accept the list of the financial institutions for 2025.
Mr. Chairman, just one question.
Yep, Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Since it's every other year, should we have 2025, 2026 in the motion?
It's supposed to be on even-numbered years, so I just threw it in tonight, so I will be down next year, and we'll probably go from there. Honestly, it was more of a formality, just to give you guys an update of what was going on, so I'll be down again next year with the 2026.
So 2025 will meet your needs?
It will.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the list of financial institutions and depositories, depositories for 2025 as listed by Treasurer Hudson-Billar.
Second.
Well, go ahead.
Two.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the list of financial institutions and depositories as presented by Treasurer Hudson-Billar. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second item that I come before you tonight with is a request for out-of-state travel to attend the 2025 NACFO Conference that will be held in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, July 6 through the 9th. The NACFO Conference is a conference that I've attended every year since I've been the Treasurer, the previous Treasurer has attended it. I'm also a rep for the Treasurers Association and communicate the things that we learn at the conference with our Treasurers Association. I have 1,800, well, I have $2,000 allocated in my budget, I'm expecting this conference to run about $1,800. I will be absent from the office where my Deputy will oversee the office, and I would be out-of-state from July 5 through the 10th. So if you have any questions, I would normally attach an agenda of that conference, however, they don't have the agenda set yet. I did attach a save the date, mine looks a little different, it must not have came over through the computer very well, but I have not the agenda yet, but would like to start looking for plane tickets, because they're going to get more expensive the longer I wait.
Can you provide us an agenda when it becomes available?
I absolutely can.
You don't have to come down, just provide it in our packet.
Yes, I sure can.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions for Kerry?
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve the out-of-state travel from July 5 through July 10 of 2025 for our County Treasurer to attend the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers Training Conference in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state travel from July 5 through the 10th for Treasurer Hudson-Billar to attend the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers in, held in Pennsylvania. Is there any other discussion?
Just to comment, to add that appreciate the learning opportunity that you bring back to this office, as well as across North Dakota with your representation, too.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Enjoy. All right, next up is Tim Nielsen, Director.
Good evening, Chairman Roan, Commissioners.
Chairman Roan.
Okay, we'll start over. Good evening, Chairman Bain, Auditor Roan, Commissioners. I'm here to discuss a possible merger of the Parks and the Weeds, combining our Directors into one. You all got the packet, and I had information in there, so I'm not going to go over all that information with you. I will let you know that this has been in front of the Weed Board, the Park Board, and the Water Board, and it has unanimous support from all members of those three boards. So with that being said, I will see if you guys got any questions, comments, concerns. If I can't answer them, I'm sure Auditor Roan could, or Wendy Bent, Human Resources, could.
I know we have a couple people that want to make some comments, but is there any questions from the Commissioners for Tim?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just, Tim, would you just give a brief overview of the benefits or any negatives that would affect the combining of these administrative roles?
Well, the-
Just as an overview, because we've got a lot of the listening public, as well as the gallery here, too.
Okay, the benefits are going to be quite numerous. We're going to have cross-training for different departments, we'll be able to utilize park equipment better, man-hours better. The Weed Board will get better response time in spraying weeds when the weather is acceptable. When weather is not conducive for spraying weeds, those people will be able to come over and help us out in the parks. So on both sides, it's a win-win there. Cost savings should be a fair amount of dollars. As far as negative goes, I'm sure at some point we'll find something, but when you have the right people in the right place, you should be able to work through those. I can't guarantee there's not going to be a negative, but I've been thinking about this for months, and I do not foresee a negative.
And, oh, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed in the Park Board, the benefits that it brings is just stated, how it combines the synergies between two entities that work together but separately, and now they work more together if we make this happen, but also providing less downtime between the two departments as well, because, you know, you get the tough wind days where you can't spray. So that service just automatically feeds into the Park Board, as far as being able to provide the services within the Park Board for the day-to-day maintenance, and vice versa. I believe cost savings, what was presented then, was roughly $55,000, if my memory's correct.
I think you're a little low on that, but it was a good chunk of change.
$71,000.
You know, there's going to be benefits that we really haven't even seen yet. You know, I'm just thinking, the Weed Board's out spraying weeds in the western part of the state, you know, we got a shop right there, bring your stuff in, park it inside, life is good. You know, I just, I don't see negatives, I see positives, and I think there's going to be a lot of positives that we don't realize as of yet.
And for Commissioner Tocash, because he sits on the Weed Board, we had that joint meeting between the Weed Board and the Park Board.
Right. There's some conflict, potential conflict there. Mr. Chairman, we did talk about this during the Weed Board meeting, and some of my concerns came out as, if you have two different budgets, making sure everything is allocated properly, personnel, making sure personnel are being used, used efficiently and equitably between the departments. I believe it will work. I'm in support of saving the county some money. That's always a good thing, as long as we stay on the right side of any legal issues, and also reach out to HR Bent to talk about simple things, as far as time cards and allocation of, you know, how do we track all that? And everyone seems to be comfortable with those day-to-day operational things. Tim, have we noticed anything, or have you know of anything else that we should be aware of, that would cause any issues?
I don't. I don't. Like I say, I can't think of any, and I'm not going to stand here and look you in the eyes and say there's not going to be any. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of any. If I would have, I would have come up with a solution, or I'd have found the people that can make the solution. After a meeting at the Water Board yesterday, I was not aware of how many different levels of the state government, county government, that one Director manages several different departments, so this is nothing new, you know? And it happened at the state level, where there's a lot more dollars and a lot more people involved.
And again, to reiterate, we're not combining the Boards, because the Weed Board will maintain its separation, its full integrity, the Park Board maintains its full separation, its full integrity, because both are actually identified in state statute. So they will continue as normal, just using the assets of the employees in a combined effort.
Yep.
HR Director Bent, you have comments?
Good evening, Commission, Auditor Roan. The one piece of transparency I think that is needed here is that we are unable to appoint the Weed Director, that is the Weed Board's responsibility. So if the combination does end up going through, when the interview panel comes together, and if there is a difference in opinion on who should get the job between the Weed Board, between the Weed Board representative and the remaining panel, there's a potential conflict there. So I do believe that we all need to be prepared for that. And I think that was the primary, the primary challenge that we saw throughout this entire situation, is that the Weed Board does have control over that Weed Appointment.
So this position used to be part-time?
That is correct.
Both of them were part-time, and they went to full-time. So basically, we have someone that's retiring, and to try to put it into one for the time being, to see if it works, is the time to do it.
That's what we believe. We believe that now's the opportunity to at least give the combination a chance, to see, maybe a trial and error opportunity for us. As far as those positions being part-time previously, that was in 2013 that we ended up having our Weed Director, who was part-time at the time, leave the organization, and then we hired Cody Schnabel. But we chose to make that a part, or a full-time position, simply because we were having challenges, finding quality applicants on a part-time basis, and it being a non-benefited position from a part-time perspective, or at least the benefits being more expensive to individuals, because those benefits are offered on a proportionate basis, based on the number of hours the employee works. So we did move that to full-time. And a lot of people have asked, well, what did you do with that individual with that part-time? Did you give them extra work? We actually assigned that individual to the Highway Department through the winter months to provide additional assistance to our Highway Department. And when Vern Davis retired, Tim Nielsen applied for that open position, and it was part-time with Vern, and we moved it to full-time, because we knew that there were upcoming projects that were going to be, that would need to be managed more directly, and the part-time service wouldn't work, so we did move that position to full-time. And now that a lot of those projects have gone away, simply because the cost share may not be there from a county perspective, that position isn't as busy. So we're looking, so it would be a great opportunity just to mash those two positions together, and at least attempt, attempt to see if it'll work.
Wade, you were with the Water Board, you had wanted to say something from that board?
Good evening, Chairman Bain, Morton County Commission, Auditor Roan. My name is Wade Bachmeyer, I'm the Chairman of the Morton County Water Resource District. The district has had a long working relationship with Morton County Parks, primarily with Harmon Lake, with recreational features at Harmon Lake. And in general, the district builds it, and Parks manages it. So during the time that Tim has been the Director of Parks, that working relationship has been nothing but excellent. Tim's very good to work with, he keeps the district informed on what's going on, he keeps the facility neat and clean, and functioning properly. And while the district wants to congratulate Tim on his upcoming retirement, we are very sad to see him go and not be able to work with him anymore. So when we were told about this proposal of merging the two positions into one, we thought it was worthy of discussion. So we did meet, and we looked at every possible angle, every possible pitfall problem, and we couldn't find any. Like Tim says, never say never, but we determined that we just did not see any decrease in benefits regarding our working relationship with the Parks. So the Morton County Water Resource District decided to go on record and let this panel know that we would be in support of it. The district would be in support.
Sorry, Wade, as a member of the public, can you state your name and your position, just for the record?
I thought I did.
Did you?
I thought I did.
Okay, I missed it. Sorry. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bachmeyer? Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reserve that right. Commissioners have any questions for anybody? Or is there somebody else? I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the question then would be for Wendy. Is this a final decision tonight, or by the packet, there's some type of survey, or we have other plans on what we're going to do with this position?
Good evening again, Commission. I believe that would be the Commission's decision. The recommendation from Tim, as I understand it, is for a decision tonight, but it is important to obtain public input, so that's why the survey was provided into the packet. So it shows an opportunity for Tim at least trying to gain input, but in my opinion, it would be up to the Commission on whether or not they wanted a final decision or not. But either way, whichever way that the Commission goes, it's still important to gain public input on how that position should be put together, and how the services to the community should be provided going forward.
Is there somebody from the Weed Board that would like to say anything? You don't have to, but if you want to. We've given the Water Board and the Park Board the chance, so.
Kevin Schmidt, Chairman of the Morton County Weed. Commissioners, thank you for the time. We had our meeting with the Park Board, and we thought it might be a good thing to work out, and it's going to be okay, should work. Only concerns we had was, if it doesn't work, can we keep who we had, or if you open it up for other people for the job? We're happy with who we got, I mean, that's a question we had, but other than that, I guess everything's good.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, in addressing Mr. Schmidt's question, obviously that would be something we let our HR Director to respond to, but in the same breath, if we invite Park Board President as well.
The Commission has a couple of different opportunities to move forward with the appointment of the new Director if the combination is approved. One of the first policies that we have in our handbook is a reduction in force. So we're technically reducing one position from, and I don't know which department it would be reduced from, right? But regardless, we're reducing a position. So if we reduced Cody Schnabel's position, Cody Schnabel is given the first opportunity for the next open position. Not that the county has to grant him the position, simply because he's been reduced in force, however, it gives him primary opportunity for the job. However, what has been expressed to me from many individuals, that we need to make sure that the position is at least advertised, either internally, some has expressed externally as well. So we can either reduce the position in force and give Cody an opportunity to interview for that position with, through the Morton County Reduction in Force Policy, or we can open it up internally and allow individuals within Morton County to apply, or we can open it up externally and allow the public and internal employees to apply. So that would be a Commission decision.
Commissioner Bain, or Chairman Bain, I've got, that was one of my concerns, was disenfranchising other employees, applicants, et cetera. Want to make sure we do this in an open and, in a, okay, say, fair manner. So to just assign someone the position right off the bat, I am opposed to that. I think we should, he may very well be the most qualified person. I'm not taking that away from Cody, but I think it's something that we should open up, and at least let other candidates come in and express interest.
And the important part about how the proposal was written, if Cody doesn't, if it's opened up externally, or even internally, and Cody wasn't the final applicant or the successful applicant, then Cody's not going to lose his job. So that's really important for our community to know, as well as our Commission to know, he's not going to lose his job, because there's another spot for him within that structure, because there is still a Weed Supervisor position available. We just have to make some arrangements, and maybe shift some, shift a couple of things within the proposal, but he'll still maintain his job at his current pay.
Mr. Chairman, that same comment, Commissioner Tocash and I have shared dialogue with, HR Director Bent and I shared dialogue with, I think I've shared with some of the others, as well as on the respective Boards, is we have to make sure that we're given due process. So, you know, it's not showing the case of favoritism or anything like that, because we don't want that, we don't need that. So again, making sure that that due process is there.
Transparent. Jamie, did you have anything to add?
I can if you want.
That's your choice.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Buckley.
But I, we have the option to do the internal or external, as far as the Commission is concerned, from what I gathered, what Wendy said.
We can set that, which way we want it to go.
And just a personal sentiment, and I think Commissioner Tocash expressed the same as we have, the suggestion is we should do at least an internal advertisement, you know, applying with the Reduction in Force policy, but doing an internal advertisement to allow-
Nothing less than that.
Nothing less than that, correct. Yep.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep, Commissioner Zachmeyer.
We need to open this up external. It's a whole new position. If we close it off to internal only, and I'm reading this, I am interpreting it, that it's more or less, the decision's already been made, and we're only going to go through the ways to make the decision work. And I've read it several times. I believe that the only way to keep this out fair and in the open is to open it up externally. This is a whole new position. And let's see who will apply for it. I'm sure there's plenty of county extension agents that would have more than enough qualifications for this position. You have a whole new group of college graduates coming in May. They may have the education, might lack experience with that, where's the open door to give somebody a chance? Because if we just say we're going to only open it up internally, and then the, it's kind of like way back when, when the county wrote the specifications for equipment, that only Caterpillar would qualify. And I see a little bit of that here, intentional or not, that it's written in such a way to benefit one person, and that one person can get it. So I think we need to open it up externally.
Again, as I just stated earlier, I'm not opposed, it's just we need to make sure we're internally at a minimum.
Any other questions or comments?
One more, just a statement to the obvious, again, for cataloging time, as far as payroll or anything of that, respective budgets, that's no different than what we're already doing within the respective agencies, within the respective Departments of Morton County, they just have to tractor time for XYZ project, so that's a given, if you will.
That's done in multiple agencies across. We have a lady at the Ag Department that does grants, she's got 14 lines she charges time to.
Right.
Half hour at a time. It can be managed. Right behind you, Tim.
Just one final comment, that Mr. Schmidt wanted me to make sure- Just one final comment that Mr. Schmidt wanted me to make sure that everyone is clear on is that the Weed Board does have final preference, simply because we can't overturn their decision on who they appoint for their weed director. So just making sure if this decision goes through, that the Commission understands that the final preference would be the Weed Board.
Correct.
Well, that would have to come down to qualifications and the job.
If they don't like what we pick, then they go right back to being two positions.
Mr. Chair, again, just echoing HR sentiment is when you advertise the qualifications for the position, your hiring is going to be based on those qualifications. So that would definitely apply.
Any other comments? Or do we have a... Are we at the point for a motion?
Sure.
I mean, whatever direction we want to go.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the combination of the staff between the Park Board and the Weed Board with the assigned boards and department budgets remaining separate. And that the position be advertised internally. We'll start there. Advertised internally. And a hiring decision be made in time to accommodate transition for future retirement. July 4th is what he's targeting for retirement.
Yeah, the Monday after the 4th. I will stick around to make sure everything works good the 4th of July weekend.
Okay.
I think if we got everything in there. Weed Board final just... I don't think so.
That a job description also be worked between the respective boards to ensure qualifications are identified. I think that will cover it.
I think we should. Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, I'm not going to try and repeat that exactly. It's been moved to combine the Park and Weed Board Director while maintaining separate budgets for each board. Or something else. And for an internal search to start with. And it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Or amendments or whatever? Letting people think. Letting everybody think for a second here.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment. You know, it's our responsibility to select the most qualified person for this position that we're creating. And I agree with Commissioner Zachmeyer that that means we should be looking outside of our walls as well. Just to make sure, as he stated it very well, that we don't want to come out with a predetermined decision and try to define a position around a person. We've got a position that makes sense to me to move forward with. And again, Cody may very well come out as the best person and the most qualified person for the position. And I hope he applies for it. But at the same time, it's our responsibility to the citizens of this county to get the most qualified individual for that position. So I would support going outside.
Do you want to make that an amendment?
If I could amend that.
Absolutely.
Okay. I would like to amend that motion. And instead of going internal, I would prefer that we go outside or both internal and external.
Do we have a second?
On the amendment?
Yes.
Second on the amendment.
Second.
Okay. If not, I was going to. It has been moved and seconded to amend the main motion to change the word from just internal to internal and external. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any... Go ahead, Jackie.
Mr. Chairman, being involved in many different organizations, sometimes what they will do is they'll do an internal search for applicants for a certain length of time. And if they don't feel they've got the right candidate, then they'll open it externally. I'm pretty sure that from what I've been told, is that the way the city does it that way? Is that they do a lot of the internal search first as an opportunity for people to apply? And then if they don't get the candidates they feel they should need, they open it up externally.
Mr. Chair, that is a general process, yes. However, if we move forward with this amendment, it's automatically an external opening.
It just gets opened.
It gets opened, period. Yep. So again...
Doesn't change anybody for internal. They could still do it.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
But what I'm saying too is that we may have more than one internal candidate as well that would like the position, that both of them, or one or two or three could be...
And I hope they all apply.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, it's not preventing them from...
I'd like nothing more than to interview five or six people, but...
It's not preventing people internally to apply. It just provides a greater pool, is what this amendment is offering. And we still hire the best qualified person.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote on the amendment of adding the word external. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I vote yes, so four to one. Motion carries, or the amendment carries, excuse me. Now we will have a discussion on the motion as amended. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? It's been asked to have a roll call vote. So go back to the original motion. Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and everybody else that spoke. Next, we will move into our third item on the agenda. Jaden and Cassie from the Extension Office. A little bit of an update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Auditor Ron. I'm Cassie Allardings. I'm the Family and Community Wellness Agent with NDSU Extension. We're just here to give you an update on our current and future programming in our Extension program. I'll start with like the Family and Community Wellness side of it. First off, I'm partnering with Western Plains Public Health to offer babysitting classes. I have three classes planned right now. Those classes are to teach kids ages 11 to 14 how to safely care for kids, safely care for children, but also how to start their own business. So there's kind of two parts to that. Starting in February, the end of February, I'll be going into elementary classroom, second and third grade. I'm starting at Custer to provide a nutrition and health program called On the Move. So that will be my first time getting into the elementary schools. Coming up in... So the end of June, the middle to the end of June, I'll be doing a... I'll be partnering with Burley County to offer a cooking class. So it's another version of the same class that I'll be teaching in the elementary schools, just for middle school kids. And it's a little more advanced and they'll be actually learning how to cook and food safety. With 4H, we're working on reestablishing livestock and range judging teams along with quiz bowl contest. We're also partnering with Burley County to have 4Hers participate in Project Expo, clothing review, and consumer decision making. Those are teams that haven't been, we haven't had in Morton County for a year or so. So we're excited to get those back and up and going. And lastly, I'm working, I'm in the works with, partnering with Morton Mandan Library to offer some social emotional curriculum for elementary aged kids. So I've already provided that for second and third graders. I'm looking to expand that to also offer it to fourth and fifth graders.
All right, good afternoon, Commission, Auditor Ron. So yeah, just a couple of things on my end. It's pesticide training season, so I have three dates on here. February 19th, March 5th, and March 19th for Private General. I have sent letters out to all the producers that are needing recertification, so they all are aware of that. And then I have a fumigation recertification on February 26th. And then our Morton County commodity elections will be held on February 19th at 5:00 PM at the Morton County Fairgrounds. And then you can see in the packet there for North Dakota Dry Pea and Lentil Council, North Dakota Corn Council, and North Dakota Oil Seed Council, Sunflower. So those are kind of the big dates I have that are solidified for trainings I have going on. And then I am planning a multi-part programming series for homeowners in Morton County. And it's kind of gonna model, you know, about a three-part series. Start with planning and prepping your garden, where to plant stuff, how to organize it. And then the second part will be during the growing season, how to manage weeds. And then fertilizing, right rate so you don't burn up your plants, little things like that. And then the last part is harvesting your plants and then what can you do with the produce you gain from your garden at the end? So I'm planning on towards the end of February, early March, starting that and then continuing that through first part of May. So that gives families time to start planting their garden come end of May, early June. Also working on, I'm working with Jason Herman on doing some extra things here in April. Identifying weather patterns this last winter and how that affected or how that will affect the growing season this summer. I would say 80% of the phone calls I received this summer were a result of the winter we had last year. So just trying to get ahead of that and give the public more information on how, you know, little things like two weeks in February with 50-degree weather and how that can impact your tree's health in the growing season. So those are just a couple of the updates and then we can stand by for questions if there's any from the Commission.
And I apologize again for missing the Crop Improvement Meeting the other night. Did that go well?
Yes, it did. We were gonna... The one thing that came out of that meeting was we're working on different ways to educate producers in Morton County to grow foundation seed. So we're gonna look at putting together a banquet or something possibly next fall after harvest and just try to get the word out on what the Morton County Crop Improvement Association does because that's something I am also still learning. So trying to get that figured out so that we can get more producers involved with that because right now I think we only have, well, there are two producers that have a joint operation that are growing foundation seed. So trying to outsource that a little bit more, so.
The other question I have is community garden. Didn't mention that. That's going to be big on your radar, too.
Yes, and that's the programming I have based on gardens. That's, it's going to be tailored towards community garden plot holders. But it's, I also want it to be out in the public as well and try to reach communities like Flasher, New Salem, Glenoll, and Hebron. And get programming out west into the county as well, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, Cassie, have you thought about doing some canning lessons along with Jaden's gardening program?
We've discussed that. We've discussed how we can move from the planting to the preservation. And so I'm just finishing up my training on that. So that will be kind of a... We've talked about it, but we don't have any formal plans.
Well, I know in the past it was very popular, so I can tell you that, so. And then I have one more question for you, Cassie. You mentioned the On the Move. And you mentioned Custer School. Is that the only school that qualifies for the On the Move programming?
Custer School, I'll be partnering with Deb Johnson. So she's our family and nutrition program. And so she serves schools who have a high percentage of free and reduced lunch. So we'll be moving, we'll start with Custer. I think Myrie and Moses will also...
But I'm talking about in Morton County now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so...
But is, are there any out in the county that qualify?
There are. I haven't reached out to those yet. I'm just starting in Mandan for now.
Okay, I was wondering if you can put, while you're there, that make sure you put a plug in for 4H as well?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So, you know, to be, do some recruiting as long as you're there because that's the right age.
Right.
Okay, so if you could do a little handout to give to the students, that would be good.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
I had the same questions regarding the outlying schools as well, so thanks for that answer. But also a thought for you, Jaden, well, Cassie, and everyone else. As you're working these programs, your outreach, you're also developing videos that you can just push out through social media?
Yeah, and that's, there's a lot of products out there that NDSU has already developed. And there's things that we can do. Trying to fill the void and make it Morton County specific is definitely something that we've talked about and looked into. It's just trying to make it work and trying to fit the county's needs as well. And that's something that we're constantly getting feedback and trying to narrow that in a little bit as well, so.
Does this be your first full year now?
Yeah.
You can be able to get a lot of input then.
Yeah, I think, and we've gotten a lot so far. I think more than we could ask for, which is great. So if we can keep getting that, we can keep making it better, so.
Any other questions, comments? I will have one. Ag Day is May 7th. Keep that one on your calendar.
I already have it down.
Okay, good. I promote that one every chance I get.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Mr. LaFlore. We have a few abatements tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've got a few homestead abatements again tonight. These always uptick this time of year as the taxpayers come in to pay their tax bills. The Morton County Treasurer's staff has been doing a great job of intercepting people that are eligible, sending them over to my office to get them signed up for this. So we're rebelling as many of these as we can if they haven't yet paid. But when they have paid, we got to go through an abatement process here, so. So the first one's up is for the City of Mandan for 2023. We have abatement 6674 through 6677.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve abatement 6674 through 6677 for Homestead Credit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6674, 6675, 6676, and 6677 for the 2023 year for Homestead Credit Abatement in Mandan. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Staying in the City of Mandan, these are for 2024. These are ones where we were unable to rebuild because they had already paid their taxes. So the refund is necessary. So we have an abatement 6678 through 6680.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve abatement 6678, 6679, 6680 for 2024 City of Mandan Homestead.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6678, 6679, and 6680 for 2024 Homestead Credit in Mandan. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next one up is for mobile homes. This one's going back to 2024, which for mobile homes was a year ago. So that's abatement 6681.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve abatement number 6681 as a Homestead Credit for a mobile home.
Second.
It has been moved to approve abatement 6681 for mobile home, Homestead Credit Abatement 2024. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Staying with the mobile homes, but these are now for 2024. Okay, staying with the mobile homes, but these are now for 2025, abatement 6682 through 6683. Again, these are ones where they already paid their 2025 bill, so we have to do a refund to them.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve abatement 6682, 6683 for 2025 Mobile Homes, Homestead.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6682 and 6683 for 2025 Mobile Home, Homestead credit abatement. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, our final abatement for tonight is gonna require a little bit of explanation. That's abatement 6684. As you, most of you recall, we did pass through the Morton County Commission saying that farm residence applications had to be in by May 31st. The reason for doing that was June 1st is when the state notifies us regarding the primary residence credits. If you have the farm residence exemption, you are ineligible for the primary residence credit. So we have to know who gets that before we start approving primary residence credits. So this particular application, what happened with it is, is they did turn in their statement of farm gross income on February 6th of 2024. We did not get the application from them. They just turned in that statement of farm gross income. I've always traditionally said that that was enough. The intention that they had was clear. We'll just fill out an application for them and attach it. This particular one slipped through. The farmer did come to the window with their 2025 application, so we did get that filled out from them. They did tell us that, hey, they turned this statement in. We looked. Sure enough, they had. So this one should have been approved by us. So this was an error in my belief on the county staff and not for the farmer, because he did turn in that statement of farm gross income. So I did assist them in filling out this abatement, and I am recommending that this be approved.
So down on the abatement sheet here, you have a year of 2025. Is that correct?
That is not correct. It should be 24.
Okay, because it's for last year.
Yeah.
So then, the paperwork I have to sign after the meeting, is that correct then? Or is that gonna be, we'll look at that?
Yeah, I think it should be, we can look at it.
We'll, we'll double check. Okay. Wishes of the Commission?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve abatement number 6684 for farm residency exemption due to administrative error on the county staff. And this is for 2024 abatement.
A second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6684 for 2024, Homestead abatement, farm residence exemption due to administrative error. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Patrick Martin, our emergency manager.
Good evening, Chairman Bam, Commissioners, Auditor Ron. The topic I present tonight is related to a request from Morton County Fire Chiefs and Morton County Emergency Management Office to approve a declaration for 2025 for a fire emergency and burn restriction for Morton County. To give you a little bit of background, in October of 2024, conditions warranted and the Commission approved a declaration prohibiting all open burning in the county. The request was made by the Morton County Sheriffs to protect, basically at that time, lives of property because of the conditions. That declaration was rescinded after the first significant snowfall. Currently, Morton County has no restrictions on open burning, even when the daily fire index is in the extreme or red flag warning. On January 15th, the National Weather Service Office here locally in Bismarck held a webinar for stakeholders to present their mid-winter update. The premise of the update is to provide planning information for the current conditions and forecasted conditions for the spring of the year. I have in your packets information, basically slide decks of that presentation. And I'll go through them here, the significant ones as they relate to where we're at with our current conditions. If you take a look at seasonal snowfall so far this winter, as we all know, we are 20 to 25% below average where we normally are. The outlook for February, March, and April call for below temperature, below average temperatures, which I'm sure everybody is excited about. But more importantly, just normal chances for precipitation during that three-month period. March, April, and May outlook, below normal temperatures, and once again, normal chances for precipitation. The soil moisture currently for Morton County is in the dry to very dry category. The combination soil moisture and current snow water equivalent for Morton County is negligible as we stand today. That combined with the current North Dakota drought monitor shows Morton County, a majority of Morton County, especially western Morton County, in the moderate to severe drought conditions, which, if you remember back in October when I came before the Commission here, that hasn't changed at all. So because of, of those findings that we were presented by National Weather Service, basically the outlook that we're, that we were presented with, the conversation, like I said before, with Morton County Fire Chiefs, we are asking for burn restrictions for 2025. So what would that look like? You have the declaration, I believe, in your packet as well. We would, the, the declaration would allow open burning when the North Dakota Rangeland Fire Index, daily index, is in the low, moderate, or high category. The, there would be no open burning on days when the category is in the very high, extreme, or red flag.
Correction on that. You, right now, you have it, Mr. Chair, right now identifies Rangeland Index in the high, very high, and extreme, as the open flame not being allowed.
What did I say?
That high was in the allowable, but not, it should be in the not allowable.
We're missing, we're missing stuff.
Yes, you're correct. Thank you.
Nothing from Natalie.
Yeah, so, so open burning would be, if, if passed, would be allowed in the low to moderate categories on a daily basis. I'll stand for any questions the Commission may have.
Mr. Chairman, did you say there was a letter in here?
The, the resolution is not in the packet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I could pass a copy to you guys right now.
Yeah, we don't have one. It's, I'm sure it's the same as last year's.
Just, just a couple of comments. Of course, this is North Dakota, where we can be many extremes. I can remember one day particularly, however, 2010, 2009, whatever it was, we were flooding in Fargo, had a blizzard up north in the Minot area, and we had fires in Solon, all in the same day.
Yeah.
So things can happen.
Well, we're, we're happy that we're not shoveling snow, and a lot of people are that. But can take that into effect, what'll happen with follow-up this summer.
Yeah, the spring, the spring of the year is, is normally our, you know, the spring and the fall are traditionally our fire seasons, right? So considering the winter that we've had, and like Commissioner Morell stated, that could change next week.
Right.
But as we sit today, it doesn't look, it doesn't look good for, for our fire concerns.
So for everybody, we've, we put this into effect, it only kicks in when the Rangeland Index hits a certain level.
Correct.
So it's, we don't have to run back and, excuse me, run back and forth and keep redoing it all the time, every time the weather changes.
Correct.
And that's why we're doing this at this time.
Correct. And, and historically speaking, the, the Commission approved a very, well, almost an exact burn restriction in 2023, as the, as it's presented here today, and, and worked pretty effectively, I think, for, number one, for enforcement, number two, for our citizens, and, you know, for their open burning purposes. It's, it still didn't restrict it completely.
Right.
Right? It just, we're taking a look at the weather conditions and making sure that those match up with, with their planning.
Mr. Chairman, Patrick, can you do some social media and news release on this? So that, because I think we're maybe, I don't know, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but we might get some grief because we're putting it on so early.
Yeah.
And hopefully if they, they know what's happening in California, of course. But just so that we let them know and where to find that range index, a website, I'm sure. And it's issued, is it issued every day?
It's, Commissioner Buckley, Chairman Bam, Commissioners, it is updated daily.
Okay.
So, for example, today, we're in the moderate category. There's parts of southwestern North Dakota that are in the high category today. So, you know, it just base, it's based on the daily conditions, weather conditions, and, you know, the soil moisture content is pretty consistent right now.
And there's a fair amount of tinder on top. Got a lot of grass last fall.
Because it was been dry fall.
But yes, Commissioner Buckley, I, I agree. We will put that out in a press release, and we can also do a code red, too, for the county.
It, it's one of those things, in my opinion, it's one of those things that just needs to be pushed out every so often, because there's a complete misinterpretation of what a burn ban means. We, we know that.
Right.
But there's a complete misinterpretation across, across the masses of what a burn ban means. And so that's just constant awareness. But again, just to reiterate, what is it? Next week is Groundhog Day. Phil's not gonna see his shadows. Winter's over.
You had a conversation with Phil, I think.
Well, we text.
No, and, and just to reiterate, it's, it's a burn restriction is what we're looking at for, for, for this year. As opposed to what we, what we did in October as a complete ban.
And then, you know, again, looking at the outlook, depending on what we get for actual moisture, come a month from now, shoot, we're gonna be warm and dry.
Yes.
Need a little snow. Everybody's snowblower's gonna rust out and not get used. Any other comments or questions for Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the declaration of fire emergency and burn restrictions for Morton County to prohibit open burning when the Rangeland Fire Index is in the high, very high, extreme, or red flag category effective immediately and through the calendar year of 2025.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the declaration of fire emergency and burn ban restrictions for Morton County to prohibit open burning when the Rangeland Fire Index is in the high, very high, extreme, or red flag category effective immediately and through the calendar year of 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You'll have a copy for me to sign, or is this the one that you were passing around?
Coming back.
Okay.
All right. I'll leave it with Auditor Ron.
Natalie, we don't have any of your stuff in our packets, because there's too much.
It was 50 pages in color. We didn't want to waste all.
Oh, okay. I'll just put it up on the screen.
North Dakota doesn't have that many trees.
I know. And while, and like that much oil to make ink, yeah, or soy, or, yeah, we're, we're making edamame instead.
It's 20-some cents a copy.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I read it online, so I'm okay.
Well, so, I'm gonna give you the abbreviated version, so as to not belabor this, because we have recommendations from two boards. But if you want me to go further in depth on this first one, you can just let me know. But I'll give you the short version.
And if you can, when, because we didn't get the staff recommendation either, so when you get to that part.
To give that as well.
Put that up there, yep.
Okay. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, are we on the?
Are we gonna start with the first one here?
Petition right now, agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna recuse myself from this topic, simply because I'm related to one of the, one of the landowners.
Okay.
So.
All right. So our first item is a petition to open a road. This petition was made by Pale Horse Investments. The, so I'm putting up an aerial image. There is some, there are some parcel lines, but just note, these parcel lines are completely inaccurate, so don't look at anything along here, and even they're inaccurate in here. This is more so just for the aerial photograph. So the petitioner owns this property along the river. So this is in Tocash Timberhaven. This pink area here is what they're petitioning as opening a road. It's 20 feet wide, and then as long as this lot, which was originally part of Tocash's Timberhaven Lot 29. So this is the original plat, or an excerpt of the original plat of Tocash's Timberhaven. So this was sort of a, an odd lot, number 29, that was out on this side. And there was a label here on the southern edge of that lot that says "Private Cartway." And then usually on a plat, there will be verbiage in the certificate of dedication that will explain who those easements, roadways are to the benefit of. There was no verbiage of that kind on the original plat. It just was titled "Private Cartway." So it's, there is a access there of some kind. It's just not defined what that access is or who it's to the benefit of. But so the petitioner is asking for exactly the same footprint essentially as for the county to open a road that would be 20 feet wide and as long as lot, the original lot, 29. So this is an accurate survey of the lot boundaries. So we're looking at this, and then these lots here.
Which one, which one of, which one of those was 29 on that map?
So this is 29.
The upper one, okay.
And then this is 29.
Gotcha.
Yep, so it's shifted just a little bit to ground you. So the petitioner purchased this property in 2023. There is, this was a surveying error. I mean, it's, it's the way it's recorded, it's the way the property boundary sits. There is a 50-foot-wide sort of neck of property that comes up to what we call Dad's Drive. Dad's Drive is not a road. This is Dad's Drive here. It was an access easement that was to the benefit of all these lot owners. But so essentially, this piece of property goes out to what's known as Dad's Drive, but that's not a public right-of-way. And so really, it should have been here, but that's not how it was surveyed, that's not how it was recorded. been here, but that's not how it was surveyed, that's not how it was recorded. So this is the accurate orientation of each of these lots. So again, the petitioner has some kind of, probably some kind of access already here. And so anyway, this is just the shape of their property. It's about 12 acres. So in between that original Tocash Timberhaven plat and today, we have this Tocash Timberhaven Third subdivision that was passed by County Commission in May of 2024. So this is what used to be Lot 29, and this was incorporated into a much larger Lot Three of Tocash's Timberhaven Third, just to ground you in the fact that this lot doesn't exist anymore. It got reoriented. So I mean, they're calling it, in the petition, they're calling it Lot 29, but Lot 29 doesn't exist anymore.
That whole thing.
Yeah, it's a bigger, it's a bigger lot. But, so we're talking about just this portion right here is what the petitioner is asking for. So I guess it's, well, I'm going to give you the long version. So this is the way the Tocash Timberhaven bottom looked in 2010. This piece of property that the petitioner owns used to have section line access. You know, this was not severed from the section line. So then during the flood, this is that same section line, completely inundated. That whole bit that you saw that was, you know, kind of either mowed, or, you know, this, this was green and above water, and during the flood, it was inundated completely. And so then today, this is what the bank looks like. That section line access washed out. So that was sort of how this issue arose. So these are pictures of.
Yep.
Orient back to the area. Okay, so. So this is, again, Dad's Drive. This is Riverside Drive. Riverside Drive is a public right of way. The county only really maintains it to this property approach here. It's a trail beyond that point. This trail has been used for many years by residents of Tocash Timberhaven, maybe others, and it goes through the Fleischer property. This is the Fleischer property. Goes through the Fleischer property and up through the corner of Lot, former Lot 29, and goes out to the river. So that's physical access to this property, which in all likelihood is probably accessed by prescription if that went to a court for summary judgment. In all likelihood, they probably would say, yes, this is your access because it's been used for so many years. I can't say that for certain because I'm not the court, but that's my best guess. So this Riverside Drive overlaps with this private cartway by roughly 15 feet, in terms of the legal boundaries. So I'm going to show you a picture where I was standing right here at the intersection of this trail and Dad's Drive and that petitioned So this is a picture of that intersection. So this is Dad's Drive, which is not, again, not a public right of way. It's just a trail. And then this is the physical trail on the Fleischer property. And this is looking north at what that 20-foot access way that's being petitioned for. It's just, you know, it's covered by trees. It isn't functional access at this point in time. It may be, I mean, it's legally platted as some kind of access, but it's covered with trees right now.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure everybody's tracking.
I grabbed this stuff from the packet, so I have to show you.
Oh, from the P&amp;Z packet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. So, the, because this petition was received as a freestanding petition, it wasn't associated with the subdivision. It went through the Highway Department. Road Commission reviewed it first. The Road Commission made a recommendation to Planning and Zoning and to this commission to deny the petition because access already exists. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended to deny the petition for the same reason, that access already exists to this property. That was staff's recommendation as well, that in all likelihood, access does exist in one form or another, either by prescription or by that private cartway. So staff also recommended to deny the petition.
So can you put that colored map back up?
Yep. The, the aerial.
Yeah.
The larger, yep. Hang on one second. Find it. It got lost. I'll find it.
So up where that section line was on top, there's two lots there, which would be what I would consider the third spot right below that.
But again, don't look at this. This is not real. All these, all these lines are completely off.
So there's no, there is a plot there or a lot?
So there used to be 50 feet south of Ron Tocash's lot that I think was probably supposed to be this sort of other access to this property. I don't know that for a fact. But at some point in time, that 50 feet transferred to Ron, and that is privately held. Right now, it is not in access.
So that line, then that should be a line straight up on that side where he purchased that new lot?
Yeah, yeah. It basically, it ends in the river. Like this property, this property, here, I'm going to put up the, the accurate. So this is the accurate property boundary, and the, the north end of this property ends in the river. It does not go up, because this, this is not the section line. The section line is north of what this.
North of that, yeah. And you said this property was recently purchased?
So.
Like we had the flood in '11, so we know what happened after that.
Right.
Was it purchased since then?
So I guess the sort of strange thing about this piece of property, so this piece of property is the residual of a half of a quarter, roughly. It was Lot A, and many pieces were taken out of it. Tocash's Timberhaven itself, Timberhaven Two, various odds and ends were taken out, and this is what's left. So it was never, it was never platted. It's a residual of a larger piece.
Whoever the company, Pale Horse Investments, purchased that just recently?
In 2023.
So they knew what kind of access and what erosion had happened?
Yes. And I guess part of the discussion that we had during Road Commission and Planning and Zoning is that, so this petitioner, they were made aware of the fact that Tocash Timberhaven Three plating process was going on. I had contacted their legal counsel, I contacted their Realtor, and asked those two parties to please share the public notice with their client, to let their client know that this plating process was going on, because that's a really good time to have a discussion about ways that access or right of ways can be realigned to solve these types of problems, especially because this was, this piece of property that they're petitioning for access across was involved in that plating process. And we can't make people be involved, but.
No.
You know, they, they chose not to comment or be part of that discussion.
And the other question I have then goes back to the Road Commission, and I know Commissioner Tocash is fairly new, but Commissioner Buckley's here. We don't make a habit of building roads for people.
No.
Because that, we could be putting a lot of miles in, in a big hurry if we start building roads for people.
The other topic.
Private drive.
Yeah. The other topic that came up during Road Commission and a little bit during Planning and Zoning is just the terrain, and that very often, this will inundate, you know, depending on the river level, and that if you designated it as a public right of way, and somebody washes down the river, because, you know, you say you have access, but it's not even traversable, or you're waist-high in water, that can present some liability as well.
Well, and if it's inundated at, if it's inundated at different times, too, then the maintenance on that thing goes sky-high.
Right.
Just right off the bat.
So what we also discussed at Road Commission, and Roger Hill is in the audience as well, that the property owners need to, I'll say, visit with each other to try, we wanted them to try and work out of an agreement amongst themselves. And so that's what we really wanted them to do with this process, because that's what need, that's what has to be done to make it work. And I don't know if Roger wants to come to the podium and mention anything else that we talked about, or if he wants to.
I don't really watch him, but he will, I guess.
Thank you, Roger. Sometimes you're more eloquent than I am.
I doubt that. I haven't doubted that. Commissioners, Chairman Bame, and Auditor Roan, from the, regarding this issue, on the Road Commission, we talk a lot about setting precedences. And if, we have denied, through the, through the, my tenure on the Road Commission, we have denied a number of different access requests. If someone wants a access to a property, to a new property, they get the right of way. If it's on a section line, there's 66 feet they can work with, they can buy more. They build it to county standards, the county will maintain it. In most cases, folks will work along a section line, or a cartway, or whatever, and make whatever access they need to get to that property. The idea of the county building a road for any parcel that is not connected to a public road, section line, or cartway, I guess it, it would never end. I mean, why, why wouldn't, if you wanted a, if you wanted a better road through your pasture, why wouldn't you sell 10 acres in the far end and have, have the county build a road through it? So, so anyway, from a precedent standpoint, that's why we voted to, at the commission, to approve the petition. Any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you, Roger. Commissioners, have any other questions, comments for Natalie? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to deny the petition from Pale Horse Investments to open a road as access, excuse me, as access likely currently exists between the petitioner's property and a public right of way, either by prescription or by plotted access.
Second.
All right. It's been moved to deny the petition from Pale Horse Investment Company to, for the county to open the road, as stated by Commissioner Zachmeyer. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Grab Commissioner Tocash again.
He's right outside the door.
And we don't have a copy of these land use changes either.
Yep. Well, and it depends on whether you want to go through them, and subject yourselves to that level of torture this evening, or take Planning and zoning's recommendation for it. But I, I guess I'll go through the general list of what is suggested for updates, and then you can let me know if you want to dig into the wording. So this is a collection of land use code updates that have needed to be made for quite some time. I've been collecting them, and it's better to make changes to the land use code in bunches rather than here and there. So some of these are just housekeeping. The major change, well, two major changes would be changes to the flood hazard overlay district. The reason for this change is that HUD changed their rules last year to be effective January 1st, 2025, that any new residential structure that's constructed in the flood hazard area is required to have two feet of free board above BFE instead of the one foot that we currently have in order to be eligible for FHA financing. So that's a pretty significant change. So we wanted our ordinance to match that free board requirement. So that's a major change in the land use code. The other major change is to allow accessory dwelling units on any conforming lot in Morton County.
Don, can you guys step outside? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the other major change is that we would allow accessory dwelling units by right on any conforming lot within the residential zoning district, and provide an administrative review process for that. So that would be a major change. Some changes to sort of technical language in Article Six nonconformities. I think it's, it was overly wordy, so kind of cleaning up that language. Establishing standards for campgrounds and slaughterhouses, which were not detailed before. Changing so that in the long-form subdivision process, we would just require that long-form process for commercial and industrial rezonings and not for limited industrial and rural commercial rezonings. That has proven to be kind of a laborious process when it typically isn't necessary for those more limited use zone changes. It adds elements that are required for long-form subdivision applications, including guidelines for consultation with rural water and the local health district regarding soil suitability for septic systems. It would allow an administrative variance process for construction of a residence on a nonconforming lot if the only reason for the nonconformity is the lot size. And certainly, those decisions could be appealed to Planning, Zoning, or County Commission. And then, any instance where the code lists?
Natalie, just have a question for you. I'll be honest, I didn't get through all this today, because we only got the packet yesterday. And we don't have it in front of us for two. Can we hold this just to our next meeting? You don't have to take it back to P&amp;Z.
Could we do it to the meeting that would correspond to the next P&amp;Z meeting?
Absolutely.
That would be great.
So then you don't.
So it would be after, I think it's March 13th, maybe?
Yeah, whenever you normally come back, anyway.
Yep.
And that would be fine with me. If we're March, don't you have a February one?
That one, the timing of it falls odd. So it would be, I think it's March.
No, if, if this isn't in dire need of passing right now, I really would like to read through it. There's a lot to understand here, and just trying to do due diligence.
Yep. I guess the only thing I would say is the longer we wait on the flood plain change, we run the risk that we get a building permit in the flood zone. And I haven't, I have to get flood plain development permits first, you know, before they even get a building permit. So I mean, I could tell, I guess I can hold their flood plain development permit if they want to build a house there in the interim. want to build a house there in the interim. It's just, that was the only piece that's somewhat.
Okay. Well, I get, yeah, I understand.
Can we do that one separate, Natalie, or not?
You can, but then I have to publish it. You know what I mean?
Oh, okay.
And it's like you go through that whole process. And, um, yeah, no, I get it. It's a, it's a lot in here. I think, I, I mean, I think realistically, it's probably going to be okay if we wait.
Chairman Baim, could I ask a question here? There is a lot in this, in this draft, and I guess I'll just ask a general question. Is there any, any potential projects, homes, et cetera, anything that's pending right now that is dependent on these changes?
Um, not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah, probably not.
Okay.
I guess the only thing, I, I, there are probably some people who would really like to do an accessory dwelling unit, but it's not construction season yet. So, I mean, if this goes to March, I highly doubt that anyone's going to be in that situation.
Right. Commissioner Morell, are you okay with?
I'm fine. Natalie and I talked about some of these items already, but no, I have not had a chance to review the whole thing. I'm looking at it now, but still, but even still, it's doubtful that the frost will be out fully by the end of March.
Right.
Commissioner Zachmyer and I have, I've heard it two, three times, so. It's not fair, of course, but, but if Auditor Rome, you wouldn't have to print it in color, because wouldn't this be gray where it's yellow, if you printed it in black and white?
I don't, I don't fully look that close and realize there was all this. She was seeing all those pictures and she's like, that's a lot.
Yeah, and I get the pictures part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, you know, I always hesitate to, as far as open meetings and records and like to email everybody at the same time. I know I'm not supposed to do that, but if it's the auditor sending out a packet, you know, then you can read it over email, right? If it's the packet. So now that you have it.
Right, and that's what I did. I went through the whole packet, but didn't have time to read.
For sure. I just mean that you at least now have it so that you can review it before March 13th.
It's in there, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to print it off. It's easier to read, not on a phone.
Yeah, yes. Yes.
No, if you're fine with that, I think we don't, we don't need a motion or anything here for this. Let's just hold it and realize we're going to bring this back and ask the rest of the commissioners that haven't had a, a real in-depth look at this to do that and do due diligence before we vote on it.
And I think in that time, if you see, as you're reviewing it, if you see things that are really giving you heartburn, maybe let me know that you're like, oh, I really would like this to go back to P&amp;Z for some reason. I, I doubt that you're going to find anything in there that's that offensive, but, you know, email me changes and we can get back to P&amp;Z too.
And, and like I said, I know these two have seen it, but some of us haven't and we still have to do due diligence.
Yes.
This is postponed until March 25th, Mr. Chairman?
13th, I think. I think it's the first Thursday.
She'll have a meet, you'll have a P&amp;Z meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 13th.
13th, yeah.
We'll put it on that one, so.
That would be great.
Gives everybody about a little over a month.
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
Plenty of time.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Is that all you had?
That's all I had. I guess my only other thing, I think Commissioner Buckley maybe had, I, I guess it's legislative session. So if there's anything that you don't have time to comment on, that you would like staff to speak on behalf of the county, you know, sending letters and so forth, I guess, let me know. As, as far as planning and zoning related items, there is one bill that is seeking to force recorders to record deeds that may not have adequate meets and bounds descriptions that skirts the subdivision process, which is very worrisome to me. So that one, I think, and I mean, the Planning Association is commenting on that one, but they're a little tiny organization, so any support we can get is good.
There's a ton of things out there that haven't shaken out yet. I think today I noticed there's 1,035 bills left.
Mm-hmm.
That's crazy.
And it's, I mean, as I've kind of been combing through these session after session since 2017, you see the same ones over and over again and you just fight about it every session.
And they keep trying, just somebody will slip up and forget about it.
Yes, one, one year.
Yeah, I, I did send everybody the, the bill that a representative sent me about the direct air capture, that the state is, there's a bill she's proposing to.
Prohibit.
Put a, put a moratorium on for two years.
Till 27, 27, I think was the date.
Yes, it would be, yep.
Yep.
And we're meeting for our moratorium on Thursday afternoon, so.
And we need to continue to meet and draw up our policy because that moratorium is only until the next legislative session, so basically it's giving time for people to draw up some use codes that we, to meet this. So it's actually a good thing for us. It draws it out a little longer, but it gives us a little time to make sure we have things the way we like them.
And I guess to report back to the board, I think we are far away along on that draft. I mean, there's a lot of substance there. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be too terribly much longer. I mean, I don't know, but, but it's, we're, we're making, we're making good progress. And, you know, I think it could end up that possibly, I mean, this idea kind of came to me as I was updating it, that maybe we make a new zoning category for very heavy industrial rural uses that can apply to data centers, CO2 sequestration, you know, a lot of different uses that can be kind of a core, core requirements for that zone. And then the details for each of those uses are a little bit shorter list. That could be one way that we go about it and kind of approach data centers at the same time, so.
Piece it out.
Mr. Chairman, question or not?
Yes, Commissioner Zachmyer.
If it's going to be heavy industrial use, is that going to also be a refinery?
I mean, we'd have to have a whole discussion about what goes into that category, but I think the effects or the impacts of those uses are, I mean, they all kind of have a similar radius, you know, whether it's noise or odor, you know, it's, you know, it could be that you do your study to measure impacts and that becomes your setback, you know, regardless of what the impact is.
Mr. Chairman, comment on that?
Sure.
The, the reason I bring up refinery and heavy industrial use, and I think everybody would say refinery is a heavy industrial use.
Mm-hmm.
And all we have to do is drive out on Collins Avenue and 1806, and you're going to see a refinery on the right side and the new Mandan High School on the left, plus how many roads are being developed immediately across the fence line from Mandan Refinery. And I have yet to hear any of those people complaining about a heavy industrial use. Now granted, the city grew to the refinery, but if we put in very strict restrictions on all this and it covers all heavy industrial use, we will kill any type of industrial use in the county. And then when if those jobs go somewhere else, how long before the people are upset that we aren't doing enough to create jobs and opportunity?
Yeah. And I think it's just we, we may be running into a situation where it's not reasonable to single out a particular use, you know what I mean? That whatever standards we come up with should be applied more broadly to a range of uses, so that one is not getting signaled out for a lot more detail than other uses, I guess was sort of the point I was making. And I think you make a, a good point, Commissioner Zachmyer.
And then the same thing with egg, egg uses. Look at all the high-end housing that went, what, you didn't see Kiss livestock sitting there? And when you bought your land or put up your house, you didn't hear the cows moo or the trucks back up? You didn't smell it in the spring, you know, when you were out there looking at that lot? And then all of a sudden, well, we don't want anything there because we don't want to deal with it. Well, there it is. I mean, then Heskett Power Plant was up, high-end housing going up around Heskett Power Plant. And you had that constant hum. So the part about, well, this is going to affect my property values, and it's going to affect this, that, and the next thing, I don't necessarily buy into it. Because if that was the case, where are you going to do anything? If it all of a sudden, it's because there's a handful of people that say that it upsets them and hurts their enjoyment of the property. And we should have definitely learned that at wind turbines too. How many people, we don't want wind turbines until all of a sudden they got the lease, then who are you to tell us what we can do on our own private property? And that's what I see a lot in this too. Not saying there's not valid arguments. What I'm saying is, there's always valid arguments until all of a sudden you're the one making the money. And then all of a sudden it becomes a, this is my private property right and you need to honor my right.
Certainly going to be an involved discussion.
It's not over yet.
For sure. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Auditor Rome, do you have anything? Under other, I, sorry, it's laying on the backseat of my pickup. I will have the library update end of year statement sitting here next month. I'll bring it in. I just forgot it tonight. And otherwise, like I said before, legislative update, I'm following about 14 different bills right now, numerous ones on taxation. There's going to be a lot of shakeout and a lot of moving parts, maybe even combining of legislation until we're done. So right now, it's pretty early in the process. There's the one on the direct air capture. There's, what was the other one? There's one about, draw a blank now. Oh, any county that interferes with the development of energy projects would lose state funding, which basically is your prairie dog funding. That one's out there too. I even had a discussion with a, an attorney on that one, and, and he says, well, you know, it's their money, they can set whatever parameters they want. So what is a negative impact on energy development? Who says what that is? That's pretty wide open. So just keep an eye on them. We'll have another meeting here in a little bit. Anybody have anything else? Good, everybody's good. All right. I guess we are.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. And all those opposed, we are adjourned.